Call to order the meeting of the Lake Mills City Council for January 20th, 2015. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Misty, call the roll, please.
Okay. Councilmember Grundin previously informed me that he would be absent from tonight's meeting.
Very well.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Here.
Mr. Scharr?
Here. Correspondence, I'm sorry, corrections and approval of the city council minutes for January the 6th. We hear a...
Move to accept is written.
Motion of acceptance.
I'll second.
And call the roll, please, Misty.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
Okay, now we get to correspondence. Diane, I'll start with you.
Yeah, I've had several things. I did get in touch with a representative from the class of 64, talked with him, and he shared with me some things that I'm not going to share with everybody else, but they haven't made a decision yet as to what they really want to do. They were sending out feelers. So what we got was one of their feelers, and they're waiting to hear back from some of the other people or organizations that they have contacted. But we are in discussion with them, and when they've made some sort of decision on something that they really want to pursue, they'll let us know.
Thank you, Diane.
And if I hear about it, I'll let you all know, too. So, let's see. I attended the Main Street meeting this past week and gave a report on what the city council has been up to. And just a lot of chit-chat at the store and things like that. It seems like people are pretty happy with things. I haven't had anybody, you know, roaring and moaning, so that's good. Hope it stays that way.
Good.
Yep.
I got actually two emails. One's the Lake Mills Rotary Club fundraiser for craft and beer wine tasting, and another one, Citizens for a Better Environment from Lake Mills. I'll give those, they'll be on record.
Yeah, that's coming up this week. Citizen for Better Environment, isn't that meeting this week? I think so. Yeah, what day? Wednesday or Thursday?
I have a date that's not on here.
Tomorrow, huh? Wednesday night, I think. Oh, well, it's sometime this weekend, it's on the front page of the paper.
Very well. Mike?
A quiet week for me, nothing other than the emails, same emails Steve got.
And I, too, got the same emails that are in the record. Hearing nothing else, we'll close correspondence. Item five, questions and public comment. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda unless the item is the subject of public hearing. If your comment pertains to public hearing, then you are asked to hold your comments until the hearing. Public comments may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state open meeting law discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name, address, and sign in on the sheet on the podium, please.
Leslie DeMuth, N 8016 County Highway, G, Lake Mills.
Katie Otto, 275 South Main Street, Lake Mills.
And Katie and I are here as representative of the Main Street Program and the Arts Alliance of Greater Lake Mills, and we sent you a letter, I think you would have gotten it, in the past week, and we are partnering together, these two organizations, to aesthetically enhance the back parking lot alleyway that's right over here between Lake Street and Water Street. We've been, we're going to apply for a couple of grants, one from the Wisconsin Arts Board and one from the National Endowment for the Arts. For the past month, we've been speaking to the businesses directly affected by this, seeking their input and their concerns, and I would say generally, they've been really positive. Mr. Wilkie was much to our advantage, attended one of our meetings about this, and so we're just in the planning stage, and we just wanted to inform you and see if you had any questions. And do you have anything, Katie, you'd want to add right now?
No, we just wanted to kind of give you a heads up, and you'll be hearing more about it, but if you have any questions, we thought we could answer that tonight.
Well, I think it's a great idea, and I look forward to it.
And are you responsible for the survey results that we got?
Yes.
In our packet?
Yeah.
Thank you very much for doing that and for sharing those with us.
Surveys are always very enlightening.
Yes. Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Steve Holman, 410 College Street here in Lake Mills. I'm here this evening to express my disappointment with, I'm a member of the Plan Commission, obviously, and I'm here to express my disappointment with the approval and, or the, yeah, the approval of the zoning code and the subsequent changes made to it. I've been a Plan Commission member for 14 years, and during the course of that time, I felt that you truly needed my input, or you wouldn't have appointed me in the first place. Now, we've went over this, the comprehensive plan and the subsequent zoning code for so many years, I'm not even sure how many it was. It was sent to you, basically rejected, sent back to us for some modifications, and we did so. We probably have on staff some of the most talented people, Steve and Vicky, of course, all the staff. Dustin is probably one of the premier planners, for sure, in Wisconsin, maybe nationally. But my concern is that Lake Mills is unique, and I don't think that we need to adopt ordinances and zoning items that are, I don't know, the likes of Fitchburg, Cedarburg, Meckuan. I think we're Lake Mills. And I truly believe that the Plan Commission has put a solid effort to make what we sent you the best for the citizens of Lake Mills. So anyway, seeing I only have three minutes, this, the issue that I'm concerned with is one that I just took passion with, and it was the garage part of the zoning code, and I'd like that to be brought back up for debate, seeing that I wasn't here for the council meeting. And I'm not looking for babysitting from the council, but you're not afraid to send me packets to the extent that, I had a complete closet full of them in the 14 years, so I didn't have a chance to make that meeting, and I think it deserves an honest debate by me and possibly Pam, who is also very talented and knowledgeable. And I'd like to bring that to the staff to see if I can get on the agenda, and hopefully you'd approve opening that back up, because as we discussed this, it was said over and over and over that these items could be addressed, readdressed, and changed. So I'm here tonight to request that in hopes that we legitimately can debate that one issue. Now, I don't know where my time is at, but there's some other things in the code, too, that are, that concern me. Number one, because of the open meetings law, and we can't discuss anything, I'm going to assume that you approve of our sanitation program or our garbage pickup. Now, I'm just going to use this as an example of what's in that packet that we sent to you. Garbage trucks, for instance, weigh approximately 30,000 pounds empty. They don't have those big tires on the front, because people like to buy big tires. When those trucks are loaded, they probably weigh in the excess of 60,000 pounds, and we have in our code, I better complete my statement there. With that said, the city streets are more than capable of carrying 60,000 pounds. So in that code, we have, we have an item in there that doesn't allow people to bring vehicles home over 10,000 pounds. So for the record, I have nobody that, nobody personally that this affects me or anybody that I know, but we have people that live and pay taxes in Lake Mills and are semi-truck drivers. They could be gone from anywhere from a day to a month, and if they drop their trailer at the truck stop, and they would just want to come home, our code doesn't allow them to come home, just for the fact that the truck weighs over 10,000 pounds. Now, this garbage truck I was talking about, the one that I'm talking about, actually picks up garbage at the middle school at 5:30 in the morning. Okay? I'm awake, so it doesn't, it doesn't affect me, but if there's, if there's an issue with a, with a semi-truck that supposedly could make noise, this garbage truck has got a PTO that revs, that revs the engine and causes the hydraulic pump to work to compact garbage. And this is at 5:30 in the morning. These people that we're not allowing to come home are idling semi-trucks down city streets, and they only weigh 16,000 to 18,000 pounds. The point of the matter is, we have a lot of stuff in that, in that comprehensive plan and subsequent zoning ordinance that really directly affects individuals in Lake Mills, and that's something that is in there, and we don't allow, and I'm not contesting it. But I just hope that every single word of that was read and understood, because it's a big deal, and as just an appointed member of the Plan Commission, I feel that I directly work for you. And if you, if you want us to come to meetings and actually voice our opinion, I would hope that we would at least have the chance to debate the issue, because otherwise, you might as well change the website to say that there's vacancies on boards and commissions that just require a warm body, and we only need to fill these because the state mandates us to do so. So I would just, I just would like to, I would like to change the communication primarily between us, the Plan Commission, and you, so that we can somehow interact more. And granted, you're paid, and I'm not, and I know where I stand as far as being appointed, but there's got to be some vehicle here where, where we can at least, for our efforts, have the ability to come before you and debate issues that we're passionate about, especially if we're giving recommendations to you. So anyway, at this point, I'd like to just request that you at least entertain the idea that if I request to be, have an agenda item to come before you and debate this garage issue, which for the public also, I do not have an interest in it. My garage is built, it's behind my house, and I have nobody that this affects. But for us to be working for you and passionate, I would at least hope that we could come before you and debate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holman. And I think probably the vehicle for that would be a working session with the council. That way, we could interact directly. I think that, Steve, could you work with that?
I'll review where we start at.
Okay. All right. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one else, we'll close questions and public comment and go to item six, city manager's report.
I provided you with reports on all the topics that will be discussed tonight on the agenda. I also provided you with documents tonight that were informational, so you don't need to read them tonight or use them for anything tonight. We did receive a nice thank you from Main Street, and the other documents are, are for start a dashboard, trying to put together some performance measurement data. Read them over, see if they tell you what you want, start searching for what we're gonna...
Okay. Yeah, I saw those, those are quite interesting, quite revealing on some of them. Okay, anything else?
Nope.
Any questions for Steve?
No, yeah.
Okay, item seven, acceptance of the committee minutes. I have before me the LD Fargo Library minutes, meeting minutes of November 17th, 2014. They'll go on record as read. Item eight, council business. Board and committee appointments, none. Is that right, Steve?
That's right.
Miscellaneous licenses?
Do we, we had, I thought we had one in? Oh?
Nope.
Okay.
Item C, discussion decision on request from the city, Lake Mills Main Street Program to use the community center for the Knickerbocker Festival. And this is motion 15-1-2-1. Misty, if you would.
City Council motion 15-1-2-1, authorizing the use of Lake Mills Community Center by the Lake Mills Main Street Program. Be it therefore moved this 20th day of January, 2015, by the City of Lake Mills Council that section one, that the Lake Mills Main Street Program is authorized to use Lake Mills Community Center for the Knickerbocker Festival trivia night as set forth in the attached request. Section two, that the city manager is authorized to take such actions as necessary to implement and administer said community center use. Section three, that the city clerk is directed to send a copy of this motion to Main Street Program, 200 Water Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin, 53551. The city council does hereby approve the use of the Lake Mills Community Center and authorizes the council president to sign the motion.
We have a motion of adoption.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing no...
Do I have to abstain myself from this motion? No, okay.
It's an annual event, right?
Yeah. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
Have a very successful evening. Brings us to item D, discussion and decision on request to use a community center, RE/MAX Community Realty. This is motion 15-1-2-2. Misty, if you would, please.
City Council motion 15-1-2-2, authorizing the use of Lake Mills Community Center by the RE/MAX Community Realty. Be it therefore moved this 20th day of January, 2015, by the City of Lake Mills Council that section one, that the RE/MAX Community Realty is authorized to use Lake Mills Community Center as set forth in the attached request, that the city manager is authorized to take such actions as necessary to implement and administer said community center use, section three, that the city clerk is directed to send a copy of this motion to RE/MAX Community Realty, 112 South Main Street, Suite A, Lake Mills, Wisconsin, 53551. The city council does hereby approve the use of the Lake Mills Community Center and authorizes the council president to sign the motion.
And we have our motion of adoption.
So moved.
And a second, please.
Second.
Discussion?
I don't even think it's...
And this is the, this is for the home show? This is the second one, right?
Yep.
No discussion?
Mrs.
Call the roll, the vote, please.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
Mr. Lucis is not in the audience. Hopefully, you'll have a great, great second show. Item E, discussion decision on approving real estate broker professional services contract. This is motion 15-1-2-3. Misty, if you would, please.
City Council motion 15-1-2-3, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for real estate brokerage services. Whereas, the City Council of Lake Mills pursuant to the authority conferred by Wisconsin State statutes has established certain standards and procedures for the sale of property owned by the City of Lake Mills. And whereas, the City Council of Lake Mills is responsible for the physical development of the city, including development that in the city council's judgment bear relation to the economic development of the city. And whereas, the city manager has received a proposal to provide real estate brokerage services for the sale of city-owned real estate, and has forwarded that proposal to the city council for its review and recommendation regarding said proposal. Now therefore be moved that the City Council of the City of Lake Mills hereby approves the agreement for real estate brokerage services from the Lane Group LLC, a copy of which is attached hereto and made a part hereof, and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement.
And we have a motion of adoption.
So moved.
And a second, please.
Second.
And discussion? Steve?
There was only one proposal that we received. That was from the Lane Group.
Okay.
There were three different levels of fees associated with each one of the different types of property that we were selling.
Mm-hmm.
I felt real comfortable with two of them. One of them, I wasn't quite sure it's consistent with what we've done in the past, but it, I don't know that, that was what we felt would be in the best interest of the city to go their route. Maybe we, on that one, we want to sit down and talk to Jay about that a little bit. Jay is here tonight.
Is that the Business Park?
That's the Business Park one. The, the other two, I felt, were good, consistent with what would be normal, and Jay is here. You can ask him questions about how he broke the fees down and what he's looking at, and he went over some issues, you know, that typically I agree with. I don't think that there's any value in, in creating a bunch of paper that isn't really needed. The city already provides a pretty extensive set of documents on the industrial park, and the other ones are probably easier marketed through the system that Jay has than, than creating any additional paperwork, so. But Jay is here, so if you want to talk to him, he's available.
Do you have any questions for Jay?
I have a question for Steve, before we talk this. So have you and Jay spoke, spoken together about this prior to us getting this?
Jay and I spoke for about an hour this morning.
Okay.
Basically, went over the fact that he was the only one. For that reason, I didn't recommend going through a committee to evaluate proposals. There is only one. I did...
Is, is the item that you're not, the third item, something that the council needs to discuss before we approve this, or should we postpone this to the next meeting?
Well, I, I would talk to Jay first. I mean, that's something that Jay would, you should feel Jay should be able to explain. I think he wanted to sit down and go over them with you. That's what I read in his document.
It does say that.
I just don't know that I'm knowledgeable enough on my end to make a decision on this without talking with the rest of the council. You know, wouldn't that be something we would do in closed session?
You could do that. I don't...
I mean, not tonight. We didn't post it tonight.
Let me, let's, let's do this. Let me get a motion to relax rules, and let's, let's talk with Jay about, you know, what the proposals are, and then maybe we'll get a better feel for it.
All right. I'll move to relax the rules.
And a second?
Second.
And call the roll, please.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
Jay, would you come up and...
Good evening. Again, I'm Jay Lang from the Lane Group. Live in town here, 132 West Oak Street, so I can answer your questions.
I guess the third proposal, why don't we start with that one?
Which is the industrial park one?
Industrial park, yeah.
Business park pricing.
Sure. What's your question on it?
Well, it's $5,000 per acre, and we're basically selling the real estate for about 11, 12, maybe even up to $17,000 an acre. That's coming in at, you know, 30 percent.
Actually, it says 3,500 per acre.
Oh, 3,500.
Yeah, we used to do it at, here, here was the theory, and I'm, I'm trying to go down a little bit. We used to be at 4,500 per acre, and the idea is that we had, I want to think of all those transactions, maybe three brokers that came from Milwaukee or Madison, and when you look at commercial real estate brokers that are working with land or development, or, you know, let's say industrial, when you look at the Milwaukee and the Madison markets, and really, there's no other competition. I mean, they're not going to get drawn up from Chicago. If you don't have a decent commission to them, they don't want to come out here. It's just not worth their time. When you look at a real hotbed, you know, areas, kind of like Racine and Kenosha for industrial, you know, they're selling the land at over 100,000 on the top end per acre, you know, 80,000 on the low end, and they're selling them in 10-acre chunks. Well, when you look at what they're getting for commission, it's substantial. And so for them to say, well, boy, I'm going to get in the car and drive out here and do a deal, it becomes a little bit tough, if they're, if you look at a lower price, per se. So if you say, boy, we're going to give you, you know, the typical going rate on vacant land, quite simply, is kind of the same for, you know, and I'm not trying to shoot myself in the foot, but I'll be straight, straightforward, he is 10%. But when you do 10% of $17,000, it's just not enough to draw them out, you know, and to get the, get the type of clients, businesses to at least look at this area. So that's where it's coming from.
And I was, I was just curious, because in one place, it says 5,000 an acre, and then on here, it's 3,500. So it's 3,500?
Yeah, where does it, well, where does it, the...
He has a flat fee.
It's, it's in our memo.
Oh, maybe that's, I didn't, I don't have your memo. I only have the letter I wrote, so I don't know if that's a typo, is it, or not?
Is it 3,500?
It is.
It is 3,500. In the letter I wrote or the proposal...
It is 3,500.
Yeah.
Let, let me understand, Jay is, is that the 3,500 is to get another broker out here?
Well, what happens is, I have to split the fee. If another broker brings a business or somebody out here, it's like, a lot like residential, you split the fee.
Sure, I got you.
So if you look at, again, like I said, like a 10%, you know, scenario where it's less, it just, you know, they go, okay, boy, someone's going to buy three to five acres, hopefully they buy 10, but if they only buy three to five acres, you're talking $5,000 for a commission, and on the commercial end, that's very small. I mean, that's, that's really like small on the leasing end of it. And that's what happens, is they go, you know, it's not worth my effort. And so they tend to just maybe tell their clients about it in passing, but they don't really push it, and you want them to push it.
I see.
The, when we did the other half of the industrial park, how many did you split with another realtor?
Like I said, I think it was only about three of them.
Yeah.
You know, and so if, if we want to try to do something that's a little bit more creative, where it's a specific fee to the Lane Group, you know, and then if there's not another broker, that's just the max that I get, and if there is another broker, it goes up, we can try something like that, you know, and again, I try not to, you know, you have to be careful when you're, when you don't have another broker on the other side, that doesn't mean that I do the same amount of work. It, it causes me more work, but again, I'm not saying it's not worth it. You know, it's nice to have another broker on the other side. You know, their job is to help get information and get their client to the table and keep them organized and have a relationship with them and, you know, and get them to their ba, I mean, you know, create all the documents. When there isn't another person, it's just a lot more work. Again, is it 100% more work? No. No, it's more like 25 to 50% more work.
So Steve, or Vicky, I guess, if, if we wanted to get this more concrete, I guess you wanted to talk more to anyway, Steve, about the third option. Should... Should, should we go ahead and maybe just table this until we can get some numbers ironed out, or get, so we have, so at least we know what we're voting on?
That would be my recommendation.
I would, the other option that I have is, is that you could just authorize us to start negotiating with Jay to finalize a contract. And then we could bring that back for you at the next meeting.
That would be suitable. That would be, that would work.
So basically, we'd be approving max of, well, the same two and then thirty-five hundred for the business part?
Right now, you wouldn't be approving anything other than me negotiating with Jay. Now, I, the two I didn't have any issue with. So unless you direct me different, I would basically start working with Jay on that, on that final proposal he worked, he brought forward.
Diane, is acceptable?
Well, if it's at thirty-five hundred an acre, is that, do you still need to negotiate with him? It sounded like you thought it was five thousand.
Yeah, but thirty-five hundred acres is still, I, I was thinking more along the lines of maybe seventeen fifty, eighteen hundred.
Then I have no problem with the proposal.
But then, but then, I agree with Jay. If he's going to bring somebody else in, he needs to have something to draw on. So we may need to add something in there to bring it, so that if, if it's, you know, if he brings someone else in, that we actually go up to thirty-five hundred then.
I have no problem. Should we move to table this to the next meeting?
And let them negotiate, or, no, let's go ahead and take, he will negotiate, and then they'll bring the contract to us for approval.
Oh, okay. Well, that's kind of what I meant, but I said it wrong.
Mr. Scharr, I would recommend that we don't table it to a date certain, however, because there's going to be an opportunity at your next meeting to have a closed session talking about real estate on something entirely different, that that might be when Steve White wanted to let you know where he's at with the negotiations.
Okay.
So it may be that it won't get approved until the following meeting, if you wanted to talk about it.
Do we have a time issue here? No, okay.
Do we?
All right, that's fine with me.
So you, are you recommending that we table this then?
No, she said not to.
Oh, not to?
I'm saying, don't table it to a date certain. Don't say we're tabling it until the next meeting.
Okay, well, if, if we're going to bring this in the negotiation, you'll bring the contract to us for approval, then, then let's go ahead and take a vote on, on this resolution tonight, and then.
Wait a minute. Oh, okay. Yeah, I see.
Is that, am I?
I, I would prefer you not vote on the resolution, just vote on a, a separate motion that you're authorizing Steve to negotiate a contract to bring to you.
Okay.
Does he really need to do that? As long as I know, my job is to negotiate. They can just table.
They can just table.
That would be easier.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to table this item.
And a second, please.
Second.
And vote, please.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
So you get it ironed out and?
We'll see.
Bring her back.
Sounds good.
Well?
Item H, Discussion Decision on Alther Letter of Engagement Agent for Continuing Disclosures to the SEC. Could you read that, please?
City Council Motion Fifteen Dash One Dash Two Dash Four, Authorizing the City Manager to Sign the Letter of Engagement Between the City of Lake Mills and Ellers and Associates. Be it moved by the City Council of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin as follows. Section one, that the letter of engagement between the City of Lake Mills and Ellers and Associates for providing continuing disclosure services to Securities and Exchange Commission, copies of which are attached hereto and made a part hereof, is hereby approved. Section two, that the City Manager is authorized to execute said agreement, and it takes such actions as necessary to implement and administer said agreement. Section three, that the City Clerk is directed to send a motion, a copy of this motion along with the executed letter of engagement to Ellers and Associates, N.21W.23350, Ridgeview Parkway West, Suite 100, Waukesha, Wisconsin, 53188-1015. The City Council does hereby approve the letter of engagement and authorize the Council President to sign the motion.
And do we have a motion of acceptance?
So moved.
And a second, please.
Second.
Every time we sell bonds, and we generally go for twenty years. Every year, we have to provide information to the bondholders on our financial status. Historically, Ellers has prepared this for us, and it's been a pretty minimal report. If we sell bonds that year and they get our work, they do it for nothing. If we don't sell bonds, then they charge us a minimal fee. The SEC, and based on the memo, the SEC is getting a lot tougher and requiring a lot more information and requiring the agents to do a lot more or be prepared to deal with a lot more. And so all of them have basically been going to these agreements. And so it, it was a situation where everyone wants to be our continuing disclosure agent, because if you're doing that, you're generally also our bond agent. So that being said, we, we recommend that we sign this agreement with Ellers. They've managed all our bonds over the last twenty-five years and should be competent to be able to continue to provide those types of services for us.
How long has Ellers been our agent?
Not always, but since Mr. Heilmann's been here, I think they have been.
All right. Any other discussion?
Is this one of those years when we aren't going to have them do bonds, or we are doing bonds?
We are doing bonds, but there will be a charge over and above that. It won't be as large, but there will be a charge. And that was in the, the letter of engagement.
And that's because of?
The, all the extra paperwork that they have to do.
Anything else?
And we're doing bonds this year because of the parks changes to the existing public works building.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
No.
Resolution fifteen dash one, this is Acquisition Property Rights and the Approval of Offering Price and Submittal Report to Donald and Ruth Simden. Is that right? Did I say that right? Parcel number tw, parcel number three. And as we discussed.
Resolution fifteen dash one, concerning the acquisition of property rights from Ronald and Ruth Simden and approving the offering price and submittal report. Whereas, the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, has determined it is necessary to construct Elm Street between Pine Street and Tyranina Park Road. And whereas, that said construction will necessitate the acquisition of 34,369 square feet of land. Fee title, 5,642 square feet of temporary construction easement, 741 square feet of restricted development easement from parcel A. Acquire 6,055 square feet of land and 369 square feet of temporary construction easement of the parcel B. 3,049 square feet of land and 3,384 square feet of a temporary construction easement of the parcel C, all owned by Ronald and Ruth Simden of N.4281, County Trunk A, Cambridge, Wisconsin, 53523, for construction purposes over and upon a portion of the following described premise to wit. I'm going to skip the?
Yeah, skip that and just go to the whereas on the last page.
Whereas, the fee title is for land, a permanent easement, and a temporary limited easement for the right to construct, cut, and/or fill slopes, including for such purpose the right to operate the necessary equipment thereon and the right of ingress and egress as long as required for such public purpose, including the right to preserve, protect, remove, or plant thereon any vegetation that the highway authorities may deem necessary or desirable. And whereas, the city has caused an appraisal of the subject property that determined there would be $22,200 needed for site improvements, garage, septic holding, tank, trees. And whereas, the city has caused an appraisal of the subject property that determined there would be $91,100 needed for severance damage. And whereas, the city has caused an appraisal of the subject property to be prepared by its consulting appraiser. And whereas, the city has determined that it is in the best interests of the city to offer to purchase the land, temporary easement, and restricted development easement from the owners of such property, pay for the site and severance damage, and it takes such other actions as are deemed necessary to acquire the land rights for the purposes of constructing the improvements. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Lake Mills does hereby declare and determine that the fee titled land, temporary easement, and restricted development easement to construction, the Elm Street extension, is necessary. Be it further resolved that the City Manager is hereby authorized to execute on behalf of the city the offering price and submittal report with total damages of $279,000.
Do we hear a motion of acceptance?
So moved.
A second, please.
I'll second.
And just for, for the public, the, the land description is available on the, the city website, and it'll also be published in the paper?
No, we don't historically publish these type of paper.
Will be available at the library in a hard copy. So there's three pages, three pages of land description that we didn't go over, but it's all available if you're, if you're interested. So in discussion, Steve?
I put up the drawing of what's occurring here. And the street comes up to the end of the existing right-of-way and then turns and comes around the hotel and then out to Tyranina Park Road, right at the edge of the cemetery. There, Simden's owned three parcels in here. One's right here, one's right here, and one's right here. And so that cuts through three of those parcels in separate and different fashions. So we're purchasing the right-of-way. We're purchasing some easements, permanent, restrictive, and temporary. And then we're purchasing, then we're paying for possible damage or removal to certain types of structures on the facility. And then we're also paying what's called severance, and this is the first time we've paid that. And severance is, this parcel here ends up with two pieces. Neither one of the pieces have the value it would have when it was a, a single piece. So we pay an additional fee over and above called severance that then should return the value to him that he lost by having two separate parcels. So although he does have land left in two separate parcels, they're not as valuable as they would be in one parcel. And that's why there's a severance there. This is also, this is the first time we've dealt with this, but the three that we're dealing with tonight, two of them PMY and BSC, we modified those. And as you remember, we had originally approved where the stormwater detention basin was going to be in this area. And then we moved it, then we put it up here, and one of the things that we did was is we made it big enough so that it, it's an advantage to all this territory over here, because they now can utilize that rather than creep building their own stormwater detention basin, which would be required as a part of a site plan review. So we, it actually saved us about $25,000, and it provides more advantages in the area.
The, the two parcels that are, you know, that we split, split, are either of them buildable size now? For land, for a house, or anything like that?
The one up on this part here is probably buildable, but it's a commercial site. Its advantage would be to, to combine with several other properties, because most of them are not big enough to handle most commercials. So most people who would be in this area would be looking to combine lots.
Okay.
This one here, he owns all this land down here.
Well, so it's contiguous.
So this is really all one contiguous lot yet. So he owns quite a bit of, of property there that would have value. The, the one that really loses the most value is this piece right here.
Anything else? So where does this put us on, does this put us on track for the Elm Street?
Well, it gives us the right-of-way.
Okay.
When we're done with this, we'll have all the right-of-way. I'm still trying to make a determination of if we'll have enough money generated in tip number four this year, or if it's better to wait till next year for the actual construction of the street.
Okay. Well, if there's no other questions, Ms. Steve, would you call the vote, please?
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Item H, Resolution Fifteen Dash Two, Acquisition of Property Rights and Approval of Offering Price and Submittal Report, BSC of Lake Mills LLC, parcel number twelve. And let me see if you would do the same on this one.
Resolution Fifteen Dash Two, concerning the acquisition of property rights from BSC of Lake Mills LLC and approving the offering price and submittal report. Whereas, the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, has determined it necessary to construct Elm Street between Pine Street and Tyranina Park Road. And whereas, that said construction will necessitate the acquisition of 1,655 square feet of land, 3,267 square feet of a permanent easement, and 5,271 square feet of temporary limited easement from BSC of Lake Mills LLC for construction purposes over and upon a portion of the following described premises. I'm going to skip to the whereas.
Yeah, go to the whereas.
Whereas, the fee title is for land, a permanent easement, and a temporary limited easement for the right to construct, cut, and/or fill slopes, including for such purpose the right to operate the necessary equipment thereon and the right of ingress and egress as long as required for such public purpose, including the right to preserve, protect, remove, or plant thereon any vegetation that the highway authorities may deem necessary or desirable. And whereas, the city has caused an appraisal of the subject property that determined that there would be $600 needed for site improvements of a chain link fence. And whereas, the city has caused an appraisal of the subject property to be prepared by its consulting appraiser. And whereas, the city has determined that it is in the best interest of the city to offer to purchase the permanent easement and temporary easement from the owners of such property, pay for the site damage, and it takes such other actions as are deemed necessary to acquire the land rights for the purposes of constructing the improvements. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Lake Mills does hereby declare and determine that the fee titled land and temporary easement to construct the Elm Street extension is necessary. Be it further resolved that the City Manager is hereby authorized to execute on behalf of the city the offering price and submittal report with total damages of $15,100.
And do we have a motion of adoption?
So moved.
A second, please.
Second.
And again, the legal description is, for this resolution is on our website, the City of Lake Mills website, and also it will be available at the library.
And here.
And Steve, anything to add on this?
One of the big issues that, that I, I want to notice is that a lot of the permanent easement is that storm sewer line running from the stormwater detention basin along the property line between the BSC site and the subway site out to Main Street, because the stormwater outlet actually ties into the storm sewer system on North Main Street. So that was, that's a large part of that easement. And there's a fence along the back here where, where we'll do a little bit of damage, and that's where we're paying for the, the property damage.
Is that where the chain link fence is too, that we're talking about?
Yeah, it's, it's right in here.
Okay.
Steve, anything?
Nope.
Mike? Call the vote, please. Call the vote, please.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
Item I, Resolution 15-3, Acquisition of Property Rights and Approval of Offering Price and Submittal Report, PMY LLC, Parcel Number 13. Misty, please.
Resolution 15-3, Concerning the Acquisition of Property Rights from PMY LLC and Approving the Offering Price and Submittal Report. Whereas, the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, has determined it is necessary to construct Elm Street between Pine Street and Tyrrhenina Park Road. And whereas, said construction will necessitate the acquisition of 5,793 square feet land and 305 square feet of temporary limited easement from PMY LLC for construction purposes over and upon a portion of the following described premise.
And Steve?
Where...
Uh, do I have a motion of adoption?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
And Steve, again, number 13.
PMY is, is the motel, Pyramid Motel in Licker. And, um, like, like we had discussed it, um, we're actually gonna take more easement in this area this time and provide stormwater at that site. So, this is a little bit different than the one we previously approved for this site.
Okay.
Uh, but like I mentioned, that we agreed to provide the benefit of having stormwater runoff on, on there so they don't have to have it with future site development.
Straightforward. Any discussion?
Nope.
Call the vote, please.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
I, I would note that there's also, each one of them has a pretty substantial packet of
Yeah.
additional information that if you wanna come in and, and look through what we've prepared to, to go through this process.
Item J, Ordinance 1144, Disorderly Conduct with a motor, motor vehicle. This is the third reading. Would you read the, the, uh, ordinance, please, Misty?
Ordinance 1144, Disorderly Conduct with Motor Vehicle. The City Council of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, does ordain as follows. Section 1, the City Council of the City of Lake Mills creates Section 5-1-14 of the City of Lake Mills Municipal Code as follows. Disorderly conduct with motor vehicle prohibited. No person may operate a motor vehicle in the city in any of the following manners. A, accelerate at a rate of speed that leaves tire marks on the pavement or which causes the vehicle tires to squeal. B, accelerate at a rate of speed that causes the vehicle to fishtail. C, accelerate at a rate of speed that causes the driver to lose control of the vehicle. D, accelerate at a rate of speed that constitutes a danger to other motorists or pedestrians. E, use the vehicle horn for other than its intended purpose for warning other motorists or pedestrians as required by law. F, operate a motor vehicle at a speed while turning a corner to cause the tires to squeal. G, operate a motor vehicle in a manner that causes one or more wheels of the vehicle to leave the ground. H, operate a motor vehicle in a manner that tends to cause a disturbance. Section 2, this ordinance is sponsored by Council Representatives Ed Grunden and Rudy Scharr. Section 3, any ordinance or part thereof that is inconsistent or in conflict herewith is hereby expressly repealed. Section 4, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon passage and publication as provided by law.
And do we hear a motion of adoption?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
Discussion. I'll start off with Mike.
So, well, yeah, I mean, I, I have thought about this quite often, actually quite a bit over the past couple of weeks. Some of the things that, you know, we leave a lot of things open for interpretation. If we didn't have such a top-rate police force, stuff could be, you could take advantage of people, you know? Look at B, accelerated at a rate of speed that causes the vehicle to fishtail. Well, what's happened, what happens tonight when it gets cold out there and you go around the corner really slow, but you still fishtail in the ice? Not that our cops would do that, our police would do that, but that leaves that open for interpretation. I'm just throwing stuff out there to be the devil's advocate on this thing here.
Yeah, I understand.
'Cause there's a lot of things that are left open for interpretation and not that we don't realize it's your job to manage this, but could you better use your time at other things if you didn't have to deal with stuff like this? Like H, operate a motor vehicle in a manner that tends to cause disturbance. I'd be fine with everything on here except for H. I just think it's... I think it's a little too much. But everything else, I think, is fine. And just because I know our police force, they wouldn't, they wouldn't do something that would cause us to lose their trust by using these for more than what they should be used for. And even if you are the, the voice of reason, you know, what if you get somebody in there that says, "I'm gonna make a name for myself," and then you get 60 of these show up in one month for you, um, for number H, just because they thought it caused a disturbance? So that's, that's my thoughts behind that.
Actually, don't the police have to get a call to alert them that someone's being disturbed?
Uh, no, I think if, uh, if you looked at some of these, the case law that I gave you, the, the little snippets of that, it's, there doesn't have to be an actual disturbance if you can reason through that it would tend to create a disturbance if that kind of conduct occurred. So no, they're, they're, they don't have to produce an actual person who feels that they were disturbed. Probably so that we can, um, progress with this. Perhaps, would, would you wanna offer an amendment to remove that section?
I would. I would like to amend this, to remove, actually leave it as is, except for remove H out of this ordinance. I'd like to make that amendment.
Make that, do, you have a second?
Now, if we leave H and down the road, can we repeal it?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Yeah, if, if, if we find that there's an issue.
The chief came and wanted it there for a reason, right?
We can remove the whole ordinance if we want to in the future.
Right.
I mean, this is, we're putting it in because we have a problem that needs to be addressed. And these were the items that they felt they needed in order to correct that problem. And, um, I don't disagree with, with what's been said, but I also, this is not carved in stone. This is just today, that, you know? If it doesn't work, we get people complaining, saying, you know, "It's being misused." Put it back on and we do it again and fix it different.
Sure, but at what expense and how many people's time? How many people have to come to court and do things of that nature just to prove that we shouldn't have had it in there to begin with? Why don't we find out whether it really is an issue, which I don't think it really is? Some of this other stuff, yes, I can see it. You know, school kids going crazy, getting out of school, doing their crazy things like that. But this one just leaves it open to way too many interpretations that we could see a, a floodgate opened up in our small, little court system for something that really was never an issue. If it is an issue, we can put it back in.
Well, I, I mean, it was put in for, at the request of, of, of the PD, so, I mean, that's why it's in. Um, so I, I, I tend to agree with Diane that, and Steve, that i- if it is, uh, if it is a problem, then we can always take it out.
We're supposed to be the voice of reason up here. We don't, we don't hire them to make the, the ordinances for us.
Well, actually, actually, Mike, or, uh, Mike is, is that, I was one of the ones that asked for it. And from, from experience. So, and, and, um, and I can assure you that H will be used and will be used justly.
I, 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 I don't believe it. I think there's gonna be a problem with it.
I actually look at, I mean, our police chief came here and, and I'm, I'd like him to have tools. And that's what, he came here and he said, "Hey, I need it, I need some stuff in my toolbox so that we have tickets we can write and things we can look at," so...
And we're giving him that. We don't have to give him carte blanche just to say, "Well, this you can use for whatever you want in the world." You can fill, you can fit this under, uh, anything underneath this last one that you want, because we're giving you the authority to just go out there and do this. Not that they would.
We, yeah, exactly.
And I was the one that helped hire the chief here, and I know the chief is a
Right.
is, is good and wouldn't let it happen. I just don't think we need to set ourselves up for an issue that could show up in the future.
Let me add, council, is this, is this Item H? Is this something that's unusual? Or is this, is this usu- is, is this something that you would typically see in this type of an ordinance?
Well, when I researched, I, I checked for other cities that have this ordinance, and this one looked pretty good. This one, I believe, came from Wapone, and it didn't have paragraph H. It had everything else but H. And when I sent it to the chief to get his, his thoughts on it, he asked for something like H. And if I recall, there was something else that I rejected because I felt it wasn't enforceable. And, uh, it, Wapone's ordinance is fine without H. That seems to work for them, um, that you could go either way. You could wait to see if it creates a problem by having H, or you could adopt it without H and then see if the police department can document cases where, you know, if we'd had this, this is what we would've cited, but because we didn't have it, we cited him for reckless driving, which is a lot stiffer penalty. One way that this tool works in the toolbox is when kids are just fooling around and doing this sorts of, these sorts of things with their vehicles, and it doesn't really rise to the level of, of reckless driving, 'cause nobody else's safety is immediately affected under the circumstances that they did it. This gives them a milder version of reckless driving. It doesn't affect their, their driving record, won't impact their insurance, the cost of it, it would be a lot lower, there wouldn't be points on their driver's license. This gives them sort of a, a backed-off version of what it would be if, if they had to cite it for reckless driving and if they had the elements to it. If they don't have anything at all, well, then they wouldn't be able to do anything about some of this conduct. If you were to adopt it without H, it wouldn't be the end of the world. Um, if the police department ends up having some documented cases where they couldn't do anything because it didn't fit A through G, they could let us know that, and then the council can always amend it to add H in. So you could go either way. Uh, it's, it's not a deal breaker either way.
Okay, so we, we did have a motion to amend, and we did not get a second unless somebody wants a second. So we'll, we'll, uh, carry it forward, forward to the vote?
Can I, but that leaves us now at the motion as it is written?
As it is written.
And I have one comment before we vote.
Okay.
I, I think the key is what I heard Vicky say is, yes, this is another tool in the toolbox, but I don't see it as a negative tool. Um, I've raised two children and, you know, sometimes it's nice to have somebody else out there who can support what you, as a parent, have been saying all along. And children will be children, and I think if, if a police officer can write them up a ticket for, for, uh, you know, causing a disturbance, but it doesn't go on their driving record as a, what was it you were saying?
Reckless driving.
Reckless driving? It seems to me like that's a nice intermediary thing. I mean, you can bet there'd be some consequences at home if my kid came home with that, because I could say, "See, I told you." No, I, but you get my point. And, you know, um, whereas, you know, if you get a reckless driving, that does affect your insurance, and it does affect your, uh, probably points on your driver's license. I'm not sure.
Six points out of 12.
How many?
It's a big one.
Six. Okay. Which, which you would, if you felt you needed to do something as counsel, that's a lot of points. And this way, you could say, "Listen, this could be 12 point, you know, 12 points, whatever." What I'm saying is, I see it as a means of, of, uh, providing a stop before the price tag is quite so high. That's kinda what I see it as.
Yeah, and let me add on that, uh, sort of add on that. Let me counter it. It's also putting those kids in that same position where everybody competes and everybody gets a trophy. Nobody's a winner, nobody's a loser. You don't have any consequences for playing bad. So you end up saying, "Well, okay, I got a ticket, but it doesn't do anything for me. What's gonna stop me from doing it again and again and again and again?"
Well, my kid wouldn't have a car.
Sometimes you need to have that reckless driving in there. The other thing about this is it's, everything else in here, you can actually point to, "Okay, they did that. They did that. They fishtailed." This one, you can't point to anything specific. It's all subjective. It's whatever that policeman saw and they think is a possible disturbance.
And it has to be proven in court.
And, once again, that goes back to, is that a good use of time for, for, for Vicky? I don't think so.
I, I don't, I'm not gonna sit here and try to determine that.
But that's what we're doing. That's really what we're doing. We're determining that, okay, she has time to do this.
Well, and if it, if it's a problem and, 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 um...
If it isn't a problem.
It, it, it needs to be taken out, then. I mean, it, it's either six or one, half dozen.
I put it in to begin with. That's my take on it. We're putting too much out there.
Anything else? Points noted. Mike, um, call the vote, please.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
No.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 3-1.
Okay, recommendations for future agendas.
None, but should we wish Larry?
Oh, yeah. Larry Wolleen, uh, one of the operators and, and my ace of weather observer at the treatment plant, um, will retire from the, uh, from the city on February 2nd. There is a recruitment in progress, and I just wanna wish, uh, Larry, um, a great retirement and thank you very much for your service. So if anybody's interested in, in, uh, working at the wastewater treatment plant, um, I guess...
Is that still open?
Is it still open?
Okay, what's the, the closing date for that? January 30th, I believe. Okay.
So you have a few days left.
And the ad has been in the leader, I've seen it in there.
It's on the website, too.
On the website, okay.
Okay, um, gonna convene into a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851, Paragraph C, Compensation and Performance Evaluation Data of Employees Over Which the Governmental Body Has Jurisdiction or Exercises Responsibilities. Do we hear a motion to convene into closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Second, sorry.
Call the vote, please.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
So do you enjoy it?